Good morning, everyone. Happy hot Tuesday, July 29th. Summer is definitely upon us and hope everyone is enjoying some great weather. As always, pleased to have you join us this morning for our NIPA trustees as well as Canal Corporation Board and now NIPA Capital Insurance Company Board Meeting. With me this morning, B Gonzalez, Cecily Morris, Michael Cusick, Louis Warren, Lori Wheelock and Dennis Trainer along with our CEO, Justin Driscoll. The remainder of the team will join us later in the meeting. So always this meeting has been duly noticed as required by open meetings law and I'm pleased to call the meeting to order. We've all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Unless anyone has any proposed amendments, I'd ask for a motion to approve it as presented. Lori, thanks for the motion. Dennis, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Our contractors lists have been circulated in advance. Everyone's had a chance to respond. If there's any late breaking changes to that, please ensure you notice. Karen. We've got a full agenda, a lot on our plate. Even more has been added to our plate since we last met with Governor's very exciting nuclear announcement. We'll be talking more about that as well as the next wave and phase of our renewable plan and ongoing other operations. But as we typically do, we will start this morning in executive session. I have a number of topics to cover. So if I could, I'd ask for a motion to conduct an executive session pursuant to section 105 of the public officers law. Thank you, B. Second, Dennis, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
I expect the exec session to last at least an hour. We'll do our, excuse me, do our best to keep it moving, but at least just a heads up on time. We'll be back in an hour or so. Thank you very much. Welcome back. If I could ask for a motion to resume the meeting in open session? Michael, thank you. Second, first, second, third, fourth in there. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, as I said, we've got a typically robust agenda. Obviously, our plate is very full, our platter, as Cecily noted a couple of weeks ago. So a lot to cover and a lot to talk about, some exciting updates on issues underway and some good discussion on initiatives that will carry us into the future as well. And typically to kick us off, I'll defer to our CEO, Justin Driscoll, to give us a good drive-by and overview.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, trustees, NIPA colleagues, members of the public. Thanks for joining us here today for our July board meeting. Wanted to start off by saying that it's been a very interesting couple of months since we saw you last. A few notable events have transpired since then. Not the least of which is the Governor's June 23rd announcement around identifying the power authority as the most effective entity to add one gigawatt of nuclear generation to the state's energy mix. We had an event at our Niagara Power Project and very proud to host the Governor and her team and for this important announcement. So we'll be a little bit more on that later. But certainly a big event since we saw you last. Another interesting development, just last week, we had Governor Hochul out on the Erie Canal and the Sam Patch boat where we toured one lock E32 in Fairport, New York. And our colleague Brian Stratton, who's been heading up the Canal Corporation for the last 14 years, was very proud to say that it's the first time in 14 years that the Governor of New York State has been out on the canal system. So we were quite proud to have hosted her there. And then one other thing that you may have seen in the press, our New York City electricity bonds announcement. This is the prepay facility that we went to the market with $944 million in bonds that will result in 10% savings for our customers, given this unique structure that we're deploying here, which helps us provide energy efficiency projects for customers like New York City and other governmental customers. So got a lot of interest in the press and we were proud to launch that for the first time in New York State. And we'll be, Adam Faris here CFO, will talk to you about some other creative structures that we're deploying to enable us to do even more renewables work and to be able to potentially finance some of the nuclear work that we'll be doing in the future. But another example of the creativity of our financial team and of course, strong partnerships in the financial sector that allowed us to bring this interesting facility to markets. And Adam will tell you that I believe it was oversubscribed as many of our offerings are, given the unique nature of it and the fact that we're not in the credit markets as often as maybe some other issuers are. So back to the nuclear announcement, I'm really excited. You see that the Governor there at our Niagara Power Project, it was a hot day, but we
Oh, cool. I don't remember being, oh, yeah, I guess we did.
It was one of those 102 degree days and we were out in the baking sun, but it was really a great event. And you know, it's just another great example of the power authority being tapped by the state to deliver important initiatives. So this is no different than some of the other big initiatives we've been done in our history. Building that Niagara Power Project, building the BG pub storage facility, St. Lawrence. So many great examples of the work that we've done for the state in times of need. So a lot of excitement internally within the organization around this nuclear work. Our staff takes great pride in these opportunities for us to really lean in and support the state. And again, another challenge to us, but one that we're ready to meet here. And with your guidance and leadership, we're excited about moving this advanced nuclear needle forward in New York State. And we've already gotten started as we briefed you in the past. And we started about a year ago, once the interest in advanced nuclear started to become a big topic of conversation in our industry and around the world, we created an emerging technologies task force, which had a principal component of the nuclear work in it. So in that effort, we collaborated with our partners such as the Electric Power Research Institute or EPRI. We joined their advanced nuclear team, collaborated with our partners in public power, Ontario Power Gen, Tennessee Valley Authority to really understand some of the technologies and what might be appropriate here for New York. So we're in a very, very early stage in all that, but we look forward to playing a leading role here in New York State in this work. Daniella Piper, our Chief Innovation Officer, will be heading up this work. And already, as some of you may have seen, we recently posted a position for Senior Vice President of Nuclear Development here. And we're excited to say we received some really strong applications and we'll be looking to hopefully bring that person onboard in the next couple of months. So a lot of people were talking about, you know, what's the timeline? What should we be looking at in terms of how you get started with this work? And so you should know that we, our plan is to issue a couple of solicitations in the fall. One for community interest around the state. We've already seen examples of instances where communities, after this announcement, have sort of raised their hand and said, we'd like you to consider us.
Quickly raised their hand, right?
They did. They did. So we don't want to leave anyone out in that. So we're going to put a solicitation out, cast a pretty wide net and see which communities are interested so that we can gather information from all around the state. We'll also issue solicitations in either the fall or Q1 of 2026 for potential technologies. Obviously, not obviously, but there have been hundreds of nuclear technologies talked about over the last few years. But the focus has really been narrowed down to a much smaller group. But we'll be out soliciting for potential technologies along with those citing solicitations that we'll be putting out before that. And then looking for obviously financial partners and investors and so forth to put this project together. Obviously, talking with the federal government as well and potentially taking advantage of some of the programs that the federal government is looking to make available for this work. So we think that given that year, that one year of work we've done, we're very well positioned right now to get started with this important work. We've already started to engage with some of the communities around this. We attended a community, a couple of community meetings already upstate where communities are considering their interest in being a host community. And we'll look at that and do that in the same sort of meticulous and comprehensive risk-informed process that governs all of our work. One of the things that was mentioned in the Governor's announcement was the need for us to partner with the Department of Public Service to make sure that affordability remains a very high consideration. And so the Department of Public Service will be working closely with us to ensure that those affordability concerns are top of mind as we go forward with this important work. So a lot going on around the country in this area. I'm sure many of you have seen in the papers and in the trade press, all the activity around what we call new nuclear or advanced nuclear development. And so we're not alone and we'll be, as I mentioned, we're going to be looking to take advantage of some people that are a little bit ahead of us in this work, such as our colleagues to the north at Ontario Power Gen that are ahead of us in this SMR development work. Also, our public power, US public power colleagues at Tennessee Valley Authority who are working in this area as well. So we've got plenty of relationships and plenty of opportunities for collaboration and cooperation. And as I said, we'll be hopefully working closely with the federal government as well as we move forward with this important work. So again, we're super excited about this work and the organization is excited and looking forward to the challenges and the work ahead. So maybe before going to the next topic, maybe just stop there. If there are any questions on that?
I want you to run through your presentation. We can pick up your questions on each one, but why don't you give us a drive-by?
Very good. Okay. Also wanted to bring you up to date on some interesting work we're doing in the area of artificial intelligence. We regularly brief you on our AI efforts here over the last probably two years as we look to take advantage of these developing technologies. There's an interesting interplay, of course, between AI and some of the work we're talking about around energy and the increase in demand. Much of that demand is being driven by artificial intelligence and the growth in data centers that are required in order to train these AI models. And so there's a connectivity between our use of AI here and also the fact that AI is driving some of the need for more generations, such as nuclear and other base load generation, to support that build-out. We're actually internally finding great solutions with our AI work just to improve the performance of our power generation assets, keeping them in top operating condition. Quicker fixes, fewer breakdowns, safer work for our employees, lower costs and ultimately a more dependable power grid comes out of a lot of the deployment of AI technologies already. We've developed close to 100 use cases for AI deployment just within our own internal NIPA activities. And also, we created a, just for the benefit of our employees, we created a chatbot for our accounts website so our customers can benefit from our AI advancement and get quick answers to common questions from the AI chatbot as they call in for questions about their accounts. AI also guides energy trading strategies which can generate revenue for operations and maintenance and new investments and local economic development. So these are just a couple of examples of how we're actually deploying AI in our internal operations, but at the same time trying to develop the power resources in order to help that industry advance. We're also assisting at the University of Buffalo Empire AI Consortium where we've leaned in there and they brought our expertise to some of the work to support the consortium, which is a state nonprofit that brings together New York's public and private universities to drive AI innovation for the benefit of the public. The state-of-the-art facility that's designed to support advanced AI research and applications provides computational power needed to drive breakthroughs, again, for the benefit of the public, not for private industry. So as we continue to innovate and lead in AI, we're uniquely positioned, I think, to help our customers and our own internal operations by providing smarter, more efficient solutions to problems that we encounter in our day-to-day work. So we're excited to be part of the AI journey. We think we're leading among comparable utilities and among the state entities called upon regularly to brief them on our AI work. And Rob Piasik and his team have really been, become leaders in this space. Next, I'd like to move on to the update of our renewable strategic plan. You'll recall that we brought our first strategic plan to you back in January after the one year of study that the legislature required us to do before advancing that plan, which was the result of many public hearings around the state where we took input from the public before we issued or brought that plan to you, which you approved back in January. And at the time, you'll recall that one of the things that we mentioned and I referred to in my remarks was we had already had projects coming in behind that plan. And so we indicated that we'd be coming back to you with an amended plan to include those new projects. So that's what we're bringing before you today, a draft amendment to the plan, which includes a significant amount of new projects that we're going to be adding to our sort of due diligence review process. And so between the original strategic plan and the amendments to the plan, we have close to seven gigawatts of projects, of project opportunities for us that we're exploring within those two combined plans. And one interesting thing, and Chris Hudson, you'll hear from Chris later, but one of the interesting things is second tranche has a lot of storage projects in it. And one of the things Chris will talk to you about is some of the implications of some of the federal legislative changes and priorities. But the storage credits are untouched, if you will, in the Washington, in the HR1 or the one big beautiful bill, however you want to describe it. But in the event, heavy concentration of storage projects in tranche number two. But we're excited to be following through on our commitment to continue to add to our strategic plan as we identify, yeah, identify new projects. Chris will talk a little bit about the types of projects. Some are greenfield, meaning that we're going to develop them from the ground up. But as I've said in earlier meetings, there are also project opportunities with partners on projects that are further along where we might be coming in as a partner to a project that's a little bit further along in the process of the queue. So combination of greenfield projects and partnership opportunities, either with new or projects that are already in flight. So Chris will talk to you a little bit about that. You'll hear today from Alexis Harley, our Head of Risk and Resilience. And Alexis will be talking to you about our integrated sustainability report. This is the combination of financial reporting and sustainability reporting. And we're pleased to be one of the first utilities to combine that information in one document. And so Alexis and her colleague Paul Farne will be describing our most recent integrated report. And of course, all of this work is in furtherance and supportive of our Vision 2030 renewed strategy, which you approved earlier this year. All of this work really, this work cuts across, or the strategy cuts across all this work. And this is supporting and informing our renewed strategy. Finally, I referred to this earlier, but the Canal Corp is celebrating its 200th anniversary this year. This is going to be the location of our next board meeting in September. We'll be up in Buffalo to support the bicentennial. We have a new poster that is in demand that you see there depicted. But thanks to Brian Stratton, Rebecca Hughes and the entire canal team for their stewardship around the canals. And this is a big year and of course, part of our role here is to make sure that we can put the canal system and its infrastructure in a place for another 100 years, another 100 years of operation. So with that, I'll stop there and take any questions.
Nothing else regarding, I mean, that's all you got? All right, let's roll it back and we can kind of go through those quickly. I realize with Chris and Alexis and others coming up, we'll pick some more of that up. But let's start with nuclear, an opportunity to kick that around here a little bit. Talked about the organizational excitement from your seat, our readiness from a capacity competency standpoint. How do you look at that and building out both? What are your initial thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I think a good start for us is obviously bringing onboard leadership. As many of you know, we have a history of operating nuclear facilities here in New York with Indian Point Unit 3 and the Fitzpatrick Unit. So and then we still have some employees here who've worked at those plants. We also have a lot of people who have worked in nuclear and other organizations that now work at the power authority. So we'll be pulling together those internal resources. I know Daniella Piper, who's leading this effort, will tell you that there's incredible excitement around the organization. So we're getting a lot of people raising their hand internally to be part of it, much like we did with the renewables work where a lot of people wanted to be involved in our initial launch of that work as well. So there's no question we'll need to bolster that with additional external resources. But at this stage, we'll rely a little bit on outside support as well as we get up and running. But I think we're well positioned to meet the challenge from a staffing standpoint.
And what can we expect? Give us a little bit of sense of initial timeline here or initial outcomes. What can we expect to see happen over the next couple of quarters between now and year end? I mean, talk a little bit. I realize this is, you know, extended project, but also one we want to move with pace on. But so give us a little bit of at least the near-term timeline and outcomes that we should anticipate.
So I alluded to a couple of solicitations that are going to be going out in the fall or in Q1. So that's critical. We also are launching and have launched a 12-week sprint that is going to provide the internal governance, the staffing and how we're going to structure our approach to this internally. So and in that 12-week sprint, we'll be developing these solicitations along the way. But essentially, the way to think about it is we're in the sort of a pre-feasibility moment here until probably late fall. So for the remainder of the year, we're in pre-feasibility mode where we're developing internal strength and capacity. We're also reaching out externally and starting to develop our thinking around potential technologies and who we want to target and how we think about the project going forward, what we get in the way of community response. So that's the pre-feasibility piece and that'll be followed by a full feasibility approach, which would take potentially the next couple of years. And that will be where you really get into this technology selection, start thinking about citing, start putting together what you're going to need to be able to file a licensing application. So I think those first two components, first, this is what I would call generally study work, pre-feasibility work and the feasibility piece, that's sort of like, you know, tranche number one, if you will. And then once we collect all that information through that, those two processes, we'll be ready to get much more detailed and much more granular about what, how we're seeing the project go forward.
And the ability to leverage the OPGs, the TVAs, I mean, those are ready resources. This is a sharing community collaborative as opposed to competitive. Talk to that a little bit.
Absolutely. Well, just over the last year, we visited both OPG and TVA the prior year. So we have great relationships with the leadership there. And obviously, everybody's more than willing to share experiences and information and so forth. And so we'll be leaning on that experience. Also, the EPRI piece being a part of the EPRI Advanced Nuclear Task Force and now becoming, we just joined the Nuclear Energy Institute through our EPRI membership. So we'll have access to all the Nuclear Energy Institute information, which is only available to members. So there's a lot that we've already put in place and we've benefited from having this last year of work, I think, that's positioned as well.
Good. Go ahead, B.
Just to note, the communities have been reaching back. You know, the Governor said and we've said, if you're interested in this project, let us know. So what is the ongoing communication with these communities, right? In terms of keeping them aware and interested and in the loop as we get closer to decision points?
So I think of it in two tracks. One, we're going to have a formal solicitation where they're going to have to respond. But at the same time, we're finding that several of them are having town and village and county meetings already, trying to assess whether their community, whether they can get the community support. And so we've been attending those meetings, two already. One in the North Country and one out in Western New York, Dunkirk. So we're trying to stay, you know, ear to the ground, see who's actually holding meetings and talking about this. But at the same time, we'll have a more formal process around it.
Okay, good. Thank you. We generated all this interest and then, you know, we don't want to
Absolutely.
kind of fall off the radar.
And that's part of the reason for the solicitation too. If we just went and targeted a couple of communities and left others out, I don't, you know, that's not the way we want to proceed here. And the Governor, as you know, said very directly that this plant will not be in any community that doesn't want it, right? That was part of her announcement.
But part of what we're evaluating or will be evaluating is how we execute. Whether there's one larger facility, multiple smaller facilities, right? That's all part of, so this isn't a competition for, I mean, all that's TBD, correct?
Correct.
At this point, so we're looking for interest. I mean, we want interest and want response because there's optionality in all of that as well, right?
Right. In terms of, at least in terms of the one gigawatt that we've been directed to build, you could go at that several different ways, right? You could build one gigawatt facility, what they call AP1000, or you could build a series of small modular reactors to get to that one gigawatt total. So that's all, you know, it's too early to say.
Yeah.
But we have that optionality in terms of how we get there. And so, yeah, that's something we're going to be looking at very closely.
Okay. Cecily, go around, questions, thoughts at this point? Michael, Louis?
This is very exciting. It's exciting for the state. It's exciting for the next generation of power sources, nuclear renewables. This is, and it sounds like a smart sense of plan.
Laura, initial thoughts or questions?
Yeah, I'd say I think, you know, looking at this all kind of organically, there is so much happening in this space and it is very exciting. So you have the nuclear outreach, the ear to the ground, you have the renewables, you have the amended strategic plan. So a lot of this work is kind of happening at the same time. So I think, you know, knowing just there's a lot in this space, like having our website, you know, just help with those dates and the trackings and all that's super helpful. And then also knowing, you know, the state energy plan is being worked on at the same time, I think is really good timing, right? Because all these partners we have on the state level, we can lean on as well. The affordability piece with DPS. So I just think, you know, if there's a way too to help the public just track each of these pieces, which are, you know, big deals, each of them, that would be really helpful too.
Yep. If you've got the Nuclear Master Plan, the State Energy Plan, our work, all that is going to be complimentary.
Yeah, and they all kind of fit together.
Correct. Yeah.
That's something. Okay. AI, just keep going. Let's get a couple things. AI, pop that back up if you would, Chris. So the organization is responding really well. From your seat, you're pleased with, obviously, AI as the topic and the impact on organizations, how leadership's evaluating it and the ramifications on team and org structure and opportunities for improvement. We would, so speak, you know, from your seat, how you see it at this early stage.
But I think internally, the thing that's encouraging is people are using it. You know, a lot of times, not a lot, but sometimes you develop technology and people won't utilize it, you know, or they'll just scratch the surface. But we're finding that the usage of our AI platform, Athena, we call it, our internal AI platform is growing. And so the employees are getting benefit from it, which is obviously great to hear after you make the investment. But the other thing too is that we're just, we're viewed as a leader in this area. And I can tell you from just my travels around the state, that people asking for us to share, you know, what we're doing here on AI, recognizing that we're ahead of the game in many ways.
I think that it's important to complement the governance structure that's been developed within NIPA to kind of monitor the fast-changing implications of AI. And so I recommend, I And so I recommend, I, I just think it's just really, we've been really good at that as well.
Yep. Just making it transparent, visible, accessible. All those things are important.
Great. And, you know, productivity responses, as that is worse coming at us, this enables us, you know, increases our capacity and the likes. So a lot of those opportunities, how you leverage that for the benefit of other initiatives that continue to come at us.
And in terms of like the energy trading usage of it and some of how we're handling, using it for asset management, it actually produces revenue, you know, it saves us money.
Okay. Uh, other, any questions? Anybody else on the AI front? Renewables, I guess we can save that for Chris will be up later. Risk and resiliency, we can save that for Alexis, she'll be up later. Canal Corp.
Just a great, it's a great run. We're having a great run. This year is, is a lot of fun, you know, and that there's a lot of excitement. And just being up in Buffalo on Friday and seeing the work being done on the Seneca Chief and all the work that's going on in downtown Buffalo and where the conference is going to be. And, and it's, it's just exciting and the canal team and the NIPA team are excited about it, I think.
And prepping plans for the canals conference are well underway. It seems like we've been talking about it for a couple of years and now it's only two months away, so.
In fact, some of the celebrations have already started, some of the concerts along the canal, right? The, some of that, some of that is already in flight and underway.
Okay, great. Be other thoughts? Anything else you're observing there?
No, I think every, I think there's a lot of excitement across all of the canal communities. And the Erie Canal Museum in Syracuse is using this bicentennial year celebration as a way of kind of re-energizing that particular facility, right? And so people are leveraging the celebration across, across the canal communities in a really positive way.
Yep.
And the KLS team, I gotta believe it's a source of pride.
Absolutely.
I mean, a lot of enthusiasm there as well.
Yeah, just to, it is a lot of interest around the country and, you know, it was a, a public television series on the canal, which is really well done. So we're getting a lot of national exposure and of course, the international participation in the World Canals Conference, which is being held in Buffalo at the same time.
Yeah.
To celebrate the anniversary.
Yeah, can't help but reflect and when, was it eight years ago now, was, well, we started, we've come a long way.
We sure have.
Who would have thunk it, right? We find ourselves where we are hosting a world conference and all the rest of that. So yeah, kudos to you, Brian, Rebecca, Dave, the entire team there, continue to deliver Joe and the likes. So okay, any other questions for Justin? All right, great. Thanks very much. See if you can find a couple more things to do before we go back together. Go lunch. Yeah. All right. Joe. Way to make the move unprompted.
I was, I didn't know if the conversation was over, but I thought I'd be positioned in case.
Ready, well done, well played.
So good morning, Chairman, trustees, colleagues, members of the public. And as always, I appreciate the, the chance to present here today. I am going to have a couple of guest stars later. Eric Bowers is going to talk about a particular economic development allocation in the North Country. And Peter Collet, this is going to come talk to us about some robotics a little bit later. So I'll start next slide, please, the.
Saw some drones in here earlier.
Yeah.
We're gonna be buzzing.
They're still over there. I don't know. I don't know. I'm gonna leave that to Peter. We had some ideas.
Okay.
Although he doesn't need much prompting, so be careful what you ask for. So, so let me start with safety, like we always like to do in operations. This year, we, every year, we actually have the safety kind of stand downs in the fall throughout the canals and the Power Authority. And what we've been doing is we have a barbecue at the Labor Together, all the, the working class and everybody together to talk about safety and how it affects our lives. And this year is no different and we had a really great opportunity to talk, to, to bring on some expert speakers who've unfortunately typically have, you know, fallen prey to some safety incident and then share their experience with us to talk about how the, how, what lessons would be learned from them. It's always in a related field in some, some way, shape or form, so it really is relatable to the, the crew. So this year, at our most recent safety barbecue, we had a privilege to have Rich McLehaney as our safety speaker. So he had like 30 years of, of experience, was a safety expert and got injured in a particular way that I don't want to be a spoiler, but, because he's got a great presentation. But it really resonated with our teams because it was somebody who was focused on safety typically, but, you know, took his eye off the ball in one moment and was severely injured and shared his story. And how not only affected him, but affected his family, which I thought was very, very impactful for the, for the team. And shared a, a lot of lessons that we can adopt here at the New Power Authority with thorough pre-planning, fostering open communications, cultivating kind of a no-fault cul- culture as you're investigating incidents, making sure people are forthcoming to how it happened. And then just implementing robust observations, detailed reporting and comprehensive training for everybody to, to make sure. So that was a stark reminder for us again this year. So statistically, we're, we're not, we're not meeting the targets that we like. We are below the Bureau Labor Standards averages, but we also, when we set our targets, we also use other sources. We use American Public Power Association, we use LPPC, Large Public Power Council and other resources to set our targets. And we, we also put a little stretch in them. So as you can see, by our dart rate, that stays for those who are new to that term, a days away restricted or transferred. So your, your job basically was impacted by this incident. You, you couldn't do it fully or you had to be transferred or had a restricted duty or you were even out. And the denominator of that measure is the number of hours worked. So often in the beginning of the year, it's a very high number and it kind of works down as we build hours throughout the year. So we are trying to, to recover there, but we are above what we want to be in both the canals and NIPA. You'll also see what we've done a little bit more of is tracking the types of industry injuries so that we can specifically target initiatives around. Like one year we did a lot of ergonomics injuries, so we had an ergonomics expert come in and talk about that. We got quite a variety right now, but you can see ergonomics is still up there. And, and that's also, you know, it's, we're looking for ways for preventative metrics too, for people to stretch and things like that. So there's going to be a lot of initiatives and training coming forward on that as well. You know, next slide, please. So talked about the safety barbecue series and enhancing that. You can see the speaker there, Justin joined us and Clark for, for it. I thought very impactful. It's always good to see leadership there supporting the team as well. We've also had some FERC security inspections. FERC will come in on occasion to investigate, basically inspect and audit the way we manage our dams and the safety programs around that. We've had no serious findings on that and all the hydroelectric facilities and Clark, the Security Command Center there. The Northeast Public Coordinating, or Coordinating Council, they are a, another regulator that we were, were always trying to comply with. They're doing a full audit of our NERC reliability standards. It's very intense. It's taken a lot of resources from our team. We do not expect any significant findings on that, but there's going to be a thorough audit and we'll be happy to report those results in August when they're through with that. Summer preparedness is another thing that we've always do. We didn't have an opportunity to tell you about that beforehand, but what we do is we drill the systems that are designed to cool and or, you know, protect the equipment as it's going into summer season. Obviously, we need it on days like today. In fact, today and tomorrow from the New York Eye, sorry, what they call hands-off days, we can't really touch certain critical equipment right now. They don't want us to accidentally or inadvertently trip a unit by doing some testing, causing some cascading issues. So we stay away from those, that type of equipment on days like today. Does have an impact on our operations, not only from a day-to-day, even what we're going to do in terms of a maintenance thing. But often we have to recall outages and things like that as well. So it does sometimes delay our capital programs if it persists, but we're very accustomed to it and we drill it and we're ready for it. We also lean in, so mutual assistance requests we've had in the past. So this storm season has been unlike many others and actually every year seems like it's a little bit, little bit more intense. But we were able to mobilize and mutually aid support for Avangrid in ISX territory with, for three days with a NIPA crew. And so pretty rugged territory. It actually reminded me of our response, if you see some of the images here, it reminded me of our response in Puerto Rico. Or was, they sent us with our truck vehicles and some very tough terrain to help them out. And we were able to restore some energy quickly there. Peter will be up here talking about robotics. I won't go too much into this, but we did have a NIPA fly day event. So you kind of see that actually the drone, I think that's in here is the one that's in the room. So three day event showcasing operational use cases and training among pilots for our, for our, was a very well attended, impressive event for, for them as well. Have a couple more detailed slides. One is on, next slide, please. Happy to announce that the New York Power Authority, we're very proud of this, remains a leader globally in asset management, physical asset management. And we are recertified to the system of the ISO 55001, the 2024 standard. In fact, we are the first utility in North America to do so. So that standard has been enhanced. Yeah, yeah, very proud of that. Thank you. Team's been great and, and it's just an ongoing plan, you know, work, do, respond, you know, just to act, just a cycle of content, constant improvement in the organization. It involves every business unit, so appreciation from, for everybody, IT, legal, finance, whole group, risk. Everybody's very involved with that. Next slide, please. Yeah, so customer centric data management initiative. This will highlight the new customer center data management initiative, which aims to create an end-to-end view of the customer by making sure all systems that store customer data and interactions are fully integrated. So that's a mouthful, but essentially what has happened is over the years, as our, as our services and offerings to customers have, have kind of developed, each one of them had their own similar or different way of tracking, you know, how they're, how we're making progress on it. So what we're, we're doing here under Mary Bell's leadership is trying to find a way to converge all that. So we have one view, you know, of all the different things that we can offer a customer and how they, we can look at a customer that, especially their critical customer data. So currently, there are several different systems that store critical customer data, as I said. And the plan for this initiative would be to bring that all together and create a more complete view of the relationship and interactions with their customers across NIPA. The next.
What's the timeline for doing that, Joe?
I don't know, Mary Bell, do you have a sense of how long we're going to be with the timeline? Time, yeah, it's an ongoing effort, so it's really going to be continuous improvement type of effort, but it's, it's an ongoing effort. Okay. We've got another update for you. Thank you, Mary Bell. I think we can move to the next slide. So speaking of canals, we have a number of highlights for canals. You see Sal there. As we're all well aware, well aware, throughout the year, the opening of canals was a little bit tricky this year. We were delayed for some persistent heavy rain and some strong currents, especially in the Mohawk. Additionally, on the Mohawk, the high water levels resulted in significant impingement issues and failure of the Rocky Rift Dam. So we had some major infrastructure issues at the beginning of the season that have since been resolved or are, are working on. But largely, the canal is open for the public in a, in a safe manner right now. So despite the challenges, canals, communications and operations seize the opportunity to really shine in the spotlight and what it takes to maintain the historic system. They use sale here for some of the social media. I think the level of transparency for the public has been very well received. Sometimes, you know, there, there's a little bit of confusion if something's delayed, that there's some other ulterior motive why that is, it's always around public safety. It's our number one purpose there is making sure that the water stays where it belongs and it doesn't go where it doesn't belong and everybody is as safe as possible. So through social media, we've demonstrated that transparency. And during the same time period, compared to the historical average, these posts saw a double the amount of engagement from the public. So they are being very well received. We're very proud of that. You see down in the bottom left there, the Thomas X Grosso, that's our newest tugboat, which will arrive soon in Waterford. It's going through some sea trials right now with the vendor in Rhode Island. And this September, we're anticipating that tug will participate in the flotilla alongside the Seneca Chief that Justin mentioned. During a stop at Fairport and the christening ceremony will be held there. Where Tom's widow, Corolla, will officially christen the vessel. So it's going to be a nice event there. We're also, this is something we've been thinking about a long time, almost since, since we've had canals, is, you know, can we use an electric boat? You know, that's, that's our world, so we're trying to converge worlds here. So we do have last year in partnership between Canal Corporation, our NIPA R and D, under Danielle's leadership, we had a one-week pilot for an electric boat that was conducted with Photon Marine, is the name of the organization. And due to its success, the plan expanded to a season-long trial run for the vessel, which is currently going on even today. So depending on the outcome of that pilot, a recommendation may be made for future purchases of additional electric boats. You will be the first, obviously, to hear about those if that does work out. But we've been thinking about that a long time and we're glad to, to decarbonize that lead as, as well as we can too. So these workboats offer quieter operation, leading to improved ability to communicate while working, ease of maintenance and no fluids. So that's also good too. So any, no risk of any hydraulics or things like that into the watershed. And a showcase of the current vessel was held in Silver Beach earlier this month. And so the last highlight for the canals operations, which you'll see later in the meeting agenda, is the consent item that will be for $11 million crane rental agreement. This is a proposed five-year award that'll support some of the winter maintenance that we have coming up for the eight sections of the canals, including support for replacement and refurbishment of critical lock components, gates, valves, along with support for other critical winter maintenance activities. So I don't know if you want me to turn it over to, I got Eric and.
So big picture canals, you said slow start, how are we doing operations?
Yeah, right now.
Prizes?
No surprises right now.
Trending well?
Yeah, it was a slow start and the weather issues in the, in the, kind of the raging waters that we had really restricted our ability to put in, they say navigation boys, we have to put those in. So the conditions have to be right before we, the public is in there for, we can, so we can mark navigation, for example. So we're, we're caught up, we're caught up. It's largely, there's a, you know, a few little things here and there that's happens every year. But we put out our notice, Mariners, when that happens and just navigate around it. But for right now, everything seems to be in place and we're ready to go.
It's been a very successful season. What are we seeing? Activity levels?
Exactly. The bicentennial has, has certainly piqued the interest of a number of people. So I would say generally the utilization is, I don't have the numbers, but we're seeing an increase to utilization.
And I don't think I've seen Sal before. Is Sal new or?
Sal's relatively new.
What is Sal?
So Sal represents Sal the Mule that was part of the.
Sal the Mule, I didn't want to say that, but.
Yeah, Sal's a mule. Suspiciously looks like Chris Vitale. Yeah, so what, yeah, so he's, he's just a, you know, kind of a, a character friendly figure that can kind of communicate the condition of the canals and people follow it. So it's been a, it's been a real effective way to communicate and have transparency with the, with the folks that are.
So Sal will be like a good stocking stuffer for Christmas.
I was going to ask, are we going to meet Sal at the conference?
I, that's a good question. I actually don't have the answer to that, but I'll look over to my communications folks to see if they got something in the, something I'm sure Eileen Dix have.
All right, well, Sal, thanks for bringing that up. All right, so good news, all's well with canals.
All's well with canals.
And we're in prime position to host and we're ready and prepared and we're scrambling and hustling and I know we were sprucing up and cleaning up some spots along the way and everything's coming together nicely.
Ready to go up in all of Western New York and all the places that the World Canals folks are going to visit, we're ready to go.
Super. Any other questions for Joe? Anybody? Okay.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric Bowers.
North Country, Alcoa. Important. Chris, any final comeback? I mean, any closing remarks? Thanks for handling that like a professional.
Good morning, Chairman, trustees, NIPA leadership, staff and members of the public. As mentioned, my name is Eric Bowers and I'm the Vice President of Economic Development and Key Account Management. I'm here today to discuss the contract and preservation power allocation for Alcoa USA Corp. This item is to recommend that the board approve a preservation power allocation renewal for a 240 megawatt award to Alcoa USA Corp. Through March 31st, 2036, with an option for Alcoa to extend the term for two additional five-year periods if specific capital investment and employment commitments are met for a total term of up to 20 years. The item also asks that you further authorize a public hearing on the proposed contract and service tariff. Now to, now to provide some context, Alcoa is a Fortune 500 company and is renowned as one of the world's largest producers of aluminum with operations spanning in eight countries. It stands as one of the leading bauxite producers globally, owning four mines and four refineries. The corporate headquarters are situated in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Alcoa's Messina plant holds the distinction of being the oldest continuous smelter in the world, having commenced operations in 1902. The facility provides employment to over 500 workers, including contract employees, establishing Alcoa as one of the largest employers in St. Lawrence County. Alcoa contributes over $150 million in payroll earnings statewide. Alcoa actively supports the community through economic development initiatives, such as a $10 million contribution to NIPA for the creation of an economic development revolving loan fund called the North Country Economic Development Fund. Additionally, Alcoa is engaged in volunteer efforts and grant services, which have provide, have, have provided positive impacts locally. Alcoa and the, and the authorities share a. Alcoa and the authorities share a longstanding relationship dating back to the 1950s with Alcoa signing its first agreement with NIPA in 1955. Alcoa is one of the first customers to utilize power from the St. Lawrence FDR Power Project when it started generating electricity several, several years later. Over the years, Alcoa and the authority have collaborated on a number of long-term agreements, especially during challenging economic conditions. On the right side of the slide, there are several key contract provisions listed. The next slide provides a summary of the proposed contract and how it compares or contrasts to the contract that is currently in place until March 31st, 2026. Let me transition over to the next slide so that we can begin to discuss these key provisions. I'm not going to touch on all of them, but first I want to touch on the contract term. The existing contract has a seven year term that commenced on April 1st, 2019 and goes through March 31st, 2026. For the proposed contract, there is a base term of 10 years that would start April 1st, 2026 and goes through March 31st, 2036. The proposed contract also allows for two separate five year extensions contingent upon Alcoa meeting certain employment and capital investment criteria. Thus, the contract could have a 20 year term. Regarding employment, Alcoa has agreed to retain 500 jobs, which is an increase from 450 in the existing agreement. In Alcoa's current contract, there is an annual capital investment of $2 million per year. This will be increased to $3 million annually in the proposed contract. As mentioned earlier, there are two separate five year term extensions if Alcoa maintains certain employment levels along with additional capital investment commitments. If Alcoa invests at least $70 million through 2035, it would unlock or, or qualify for the first five year extension. If Alcoa invests $130 million through 2040, it would qualify for the second extended five year term. If the proposed contract lasts the full 20 years, then the total capital investment commitment would be $145 million. From a rates perspective, under the existing contract, electricity rates increase as a step function by $1.75 per megawatt hour for every hundred dollar change in metric ton price of aluminum. In addition, the aluminum price was calculated by taking the sum of the London Metal Exchange and the Midwest aluminum, aluminum premium. Under the proposed contract, NIPA and Alcoa have agreed to a linear formula where the rate paid to NIPA for electricity increases for each dollar per metric ton increase in the price of aluminum on the London Metal Exchange. A formulaic rate captures price adjustments immediately based on any change in the price of aluminum. In contrast, tiered rate tables update at a set interval and require prices to move outside the existing bands before an increase or decrease is seen. The Midwest aluminum premium has been removed from the calculation of the aluminum price as it is a liquid financial instrument and very difficult to hedge. A few other rate related items to address are the floor energy rate and the capped energy rate. In both the existing and proposed contracts, the floor energy rate is set to the preference power rate at Alcoa's load factor. This is important because no customer can pay less than the preference power rate. In the existing agreement, Alcoa's rate was capped at $42 per megawatt hour. Alcoa has agreed to remove that cap, which allows for additional revenue opportunity for the authority if aluminum prices were to increase. Lastly, regarding the clean energy standard charges, when the price of aluminum is low, the existing contract allows for Alcoa to pay only a portion of these charges. In the proposed agreement, Alcoa is responsible for paying all CES related charges. In summary, hydropower for the, hydropower from the authority supports Alcoa's ability to continue making significant contributions to the aluminum industry and support North Country families and communities. This underlies, underlines the importance of securing a new contract that promises price stability and predictability, employee retention and capital investments in their facilities. As with everything that we accomplished, this was very much a team effort. Negotiations for this agreement commenced in late 2023. And I want to thank everyone from the customer solutions, finance and legal teams that contributed to this effort. With that, I thank you for your time and I'm happy to take any questions.
So they've been performing well under the current contract. They've been meeting their requirements.
They've been meeting all of their compliance measures, job utilization, jobs, job utilization, power utilization, jobs and capital investments.
Do they have specific plans to expand? I mean, obviously the employee increase is great to see. Capital investment, I'm doing some quick math there, saying it's three million a year. So 10 year, or 10 years from now, that's 30 million. You've got seven, but they need 70 million to qualify. So that's more than double by 2040. It's more than triple what would be the, either anticipated expansion or what's driving the 70 and the 130 versus the 3 million annual?
The, the number one concern for them was term. And just to put into context, the last couple of contracts that we've had with them back in 2015, there was a five year agreement and we went into a seven year agreement. A longer term allows their corporate headquarters to really see that the state is committing to them and that they can start investing more into the plant. And they didn't really go over any planned capital investments, but through our negotiations, this is what we were able to put in the contract that if they meet these milestones, then, then we would offer up these two extended terms for them.
But there must be some, I mean, if they.
Behind the scenes, there probably is something in, in the works and.
Yeah, they're going to more than double their required investment over the next 10 years, more than triple it over the next 15. So great to see. I'm just making, trying to understand a little bit more of the backstory. Yeah, obviously Cecily critical to the region. And they're a good corporate community citizen.
Corporate, Eric, good neighbor, good corporate citizen. Yes.
They're invested, they're participating. Some connection somewhere.
Families.
Family tree.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and one can argue that the St. Lawrence plant was built with Alcoa in mind. At, in their heyday, they took 60% of the output of the plant, so.
And it was at one time, and like, I'm going to be wrong, but I'm going to say over, over a thousand people.
Yeah. When, when I first start, I, when I first started in NIPA 18 years ago, this was one of the accounts I took over. So this is kind of near and dear to my heart. But in the contracts back in the day, we used to have 1,200 jobs.
Yes.
This is the first contract that we've been able to increase job commitments for them. They've gone from 1,200 down to 1,100, down to 750, then it was 650. And in this current agreement, it was 450.
Yes.
They lost, they lost the plant in that process, but yeah.
It was contentious and difficult 10 years ago. So it's great to see the rebound and the recovery all the way around. They all, that's terrific. Any other questions for Eric? Cecil, you'd like to make the motion?
I would love to make the motion and I think the motion is presented, but it's two parts. We approved the allocation renewal, but we also authorized the public hearing, which is the next step so that we can get to the point of actually endorsing the contract from both sides. So yes, ISO move.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll have a second.
All right, everybody wants to be a second? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carried, Eric and team, well done.
Thank you.
All right, great outcome and real pleased and kudos to you and happy to hear Alcoa's being such a great partner. So, all right, thank you. All right, Peter, robotics area, we're, we're over there this morning, sorry.
Good, good morning, Chair, Trustees, Executive Leadership and the Public. My name's Peter Calais, so this, I'm the Senior Robotics Program Manager for NIPA. Next slide, please, sir. Under Vision 2030 renewed, I was asked, I asked the team to take a look at the three key pillars. How does the robotics really help NIPA and canals? And we came up with these three things. Safety, we want, that's where our term on Use Casebook, as you see, it says risk the machine, not the person. If enterprise resiliency, as we hear today, more and more projects are going up and our headcount remains steady. But with all this additional workload, we need a way to make our folks more efficient. The robots provide us the ability to capture the data and not question our decisions, but refer back to why we made these decisions. And I'll have an example of this in the slides to come. Next, next slide, please, sir. So this is the imagery that we're getting. From 2023 to today, 2024, I apologize. We saw an increase of 58% usage across all of NIPA sites. We're up to 136 pilots. That's a pilot in every one of our regions. Our systems have grown exponentially as you see what's here in, in the room, but we'll have more on that to come. But the thing that I really want to showcase is the 300,000 images that we've captured of our assets. The photo that you see off to the right is, you can see the serial number, D713. This used to only be viewed by the inspector. So when he would go back to his planner supervisor, he'd have to describe what he's seeing. Now we're at a point where they can show what they're seeing. Everyone's on the same page. We have so many new assets on board, keeping it straight becomes a little challenging. This gives us a way to document it, not just for today, but five years from now. What did this tower look like then versus today? Next slide, please, sir. Our systems have grown. We have a wide array from the SkyDOS that we have here in the room to Gizmo, the Boston Dynamics dog, the HaSpot HB2. This is a wall climbing robot with ground penetrating radar. We use this on canals, on our dam faces, looking for voids. Does someone have to go on the dam face? Can, do they? Yes or no? The robot goes up, checks for a void. Now we know why they have to go, where they need to go, making us safer, more efficient in our workload. My favorite one out of all of these are the Ilios 3, the hamster ball, the one that we have here in the room. This is meant for confined space utilization. Going into some of these caverns within the St. Lawrence or Niagara Falls, it's damp, it's wet, it's dangerous. Putting, having the robot to go down in those areas, capturing the data, preserving the data, that is future and innovation all in one. Next slide, please, sir. So back in 2023, you might recall this slide. This is what I proposed for our milestones to be. I want us to take back and, and enjoy this slide and actually celebrate a little bit. Our robotics program is ahead of schedule and under budget. This is something that across NIPA has worked to implement. So everything you see here in the blue was completed in the initial funding of the program back in 2023. We've now have a mission management software. We have a way to store our data and share the data internally across the whole organization. And we have some of the most comprehensive FAA waivers allowing us to do remote operations missions, which was still described in the advanced operations portion. When we sit back and we're looking at this, you're like, okay, you, you completed this. Great, congrats. But what benefit do we have? The benefit is now we're doing the advanced operations. We're actually doing missions from White Plains outside of, outside of Albany at Fisher Ferry. And we'll have a slide to display. We're starting to integrate the AI algorithms to help classify some of our images. We're doing very advanced operations. And so, yeah, a next slide, please. So now we'll be get queuing up a video, a video demonstration recording that we did a couple of days ago. As you can see off on the right hand side of the screen, there's a green outline. That is our authorized to fly zone, meaning the aircraft cannot leave this volume. The orange that you see off to the right is national grids lines. This is a great way to keep out of the area. If you notice, there are a bunch of words popping up. This is generic GIS information. With the help of IT and cyber, we're trying to get our GIS information overlaid on this. But earlier in the slides, I was talking about camera quality and range. So now we're going to demonstrate how good our range actually is. From the jetty at Fisher Ferry across lock seven, you can see two individuals and a vehicle. It's almost a half mile away and it's clear as day. These systems are coming to us by Skydio and it's an American made system. Okay, the best part about it is the autonomy. Now you're seeing how the aircraft is going to start to land. The dock just opened and the aircraft will start to land. So you might be wondering, how many missions have we done? We have over 400 missions flown manually from the White Plains office. But 90% of all the missions are automated, meaning you set your points, you hit play and the aircraft does it. And my favorite part, it lands safely. Next slide, please, sir. Thank you. Any questions?
That was great.
That was good.
I know, it's a wow.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. The reason why I'm here today, I apologize. I, I, I totally apologize.
Ahead of schedule and under budget, you must want something. Surprise or reward here, right?
So the reason why I'm here today, the robotics program is looking, is recommending an award for 14 companies to receive a suite of contracts for hardware and software. With the rapid growth of the robotics program, we need these contracts for ongoing needs. This is 17 companies bid on this back in March earlier this year and 14 were selected by a group. The, these contracts will help NIPA and canals increase the robotics usage and needs. Next slide, please, sir.
We can roll it back.
Yeah.
Roll it back to your. So what do you want us to take away from this? What, I mean, ahead of schedule, under budget. We're best in class. We're a better organization because of this information. I mean, distill it down for the less informed.
The reason why the folks out in the field wear FR gear is it's very dangerous. Okay, even today, we have folks on the right away doing their job from vegetation management to security to just construction. We do a lot of work. What robots are giving our employees the ability to do is to review a lot of the data before they get there. When we're doing these construction projects like the Alcoa and other major projects, we're modeling them while we're there, sending it to the folks who are going to travel to those locations. So now you're not rushing to do your job. You're taking your time. Once you're on site, you can be more thorough saying, hey, the model's missing this portion. Let me spend a little bit more time looking here. That's what we're seeing. It's, it, it's been a quite useful tool, especially when we're not trying to build up the robotics team. But having our everyday employees use the tool, that's been the, the biggest amplifier, I think. Joe and, and team.
As you said, Joe, what do you see? What, what have you seen the benefits and your team and organization better because of this?
Yeah, I mean, we saw, you know, Justin touched on, he kind of, you know, made a joke about the, just the increasing remit that we have at the New York Power Authority and our, our employees are, you know, working and we use our external resources. What these, these tools have done for us have really allowed us to leverage the intellectual capital of the employee, keeping them out of, of, of danger by getting information. I know what Peter didn't say about that image. How high was that off the ground? That image where you could read the serial number?
170.
Right, so sending someone 100 feet up in the air, you get that information right there. We found defects. We're going to be able to use software, the, some of these providers that Peter has here, but also the, some of the things that we do in strategic operations in our ISO. We're going to be able to use software, the, some of these providers that, um, Peter has here, but also the, some of the, uh, things that we do in strategic operations in our ISOC. We'll be able to identify defects in this imagery. Uh, we learned very much from our deployment in Puerto Rico, kind of, I have to say, because we thought we needed sophisticated uh, drone to really capture images with a massive payload. And what we really learned from that experience and Peter has since amplified, not only in drones, but other robotics, is that we just really need a good image. If we got a really good image, we can detect a lot of different things that are, are incipient in some ways. And, you know, whether it's a crack in a piece of equipment or things like that, that you just can't see from the ground or even might get missed with the naked eye. So it's going to not only enhance the safety of the, uh, the employees, but using the software, it's going to be more thorough, um, analysis of what, what condition we're looking at. So, um, again, striking all the pillars that Peter talked about, Division twenty thirty.
Other questions for Peter? All right, if we're gonna have a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the request for twenty million over the next five years. Right? All right, lined up. Karen, have it, you got Louis, Lori and Dennis for first and a second, uh, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Peter, thanks for a great presentation and thanks for, uh, your great work.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Keep going ahead of schedule and under budget. All right, you got a great, you got a great future here. Okay, super. Thanks so much.
Are you zipping around down there with these? I, I mean.
We, we could fly in Albany, ma'am, if you came downstairs, I would let you fly. I'd be the RPIC, but I would let you fly.
Were you, um, were you up at Clarkson last year?
Yes, ma'am.
That was a great presentation and the students were so interested.
The, the, the community outreach has been something that me and my team have, have pride ourselves on. Getting the kids involved and when you see them smile, it's, it's, um, it's been a lot of fun.
There were long lines waiting to have the operation in their hands and you could tell that they just all knew already what they were doing.
So it's okay, right? So one, one of my favorite experiences was actually with Madrid Waddington. They came in fourth in the nation in drone soccer.
Who's Madrid, uh, educate voters?
It's a school, a Madrid Waddington.
Oh, okay.
It's a school up in the north.
Oh, okay.
Saint Lawrence County, yeah.
Been helping them, uh, quite a bit with their, their drone program. But they have drone soccer. And drone soccer is, it's a little version of the hamster ball. And we let the kids fly. And a young lady turned to me and said, how much is this? And I told her the price. She said to me, why would you let me fly this? And I said, ma'am, for two reasons. Number one, you ask the right question. And if not, you then, and the smile just came across her face. It, it, this is the wave of the future. I, I really truly believe it. Getting the kids believing they can do it.
Sure.
Yes.
It's, it's important.
Great.
But I don't think we can ever overlook the safety aspect, what it brings to the table.
Oh, it enhances.
Instead of people hanging out of helicopters to check lines and to check that connection. Now it's a machine that does it very well and then preserves it. And everybody who needs to look at that can look at that. I don't think we can ever under, under value what it brings to the table and in terms of safety for our workforce.
You won't have a copy of the use case book.
Yeah, yes.
Please feel free, um, we'll get you out.
Thank you.
I just wanted to just point out too that, uh, Peter's understating here, but his outreach also includes a lot of uh, organizations that wouldn't otherwise, these kids would not otherwise have an opportunity or
Have access to something like this.
So some of the, um, disadvantaged communities he's working with. So we're working with Kyla and team on EJ on, on some workforce folks that, uh, at that level.
That's great.
So he, he didn't state that, uh, enough. I think there's a lot going on there too.
Very, very well done. Very well done. Okay, speaking of well done, Adam and financials.
Good morning, trustees, uh, NIPA colleagues, members of the public. Not as exciting as all the stuff you've heard already, but in this case is probably a good thing. But we, you know, we continue to do well this year, um, going according to our plan and exceeding it. As we mentioned, I think our conversation, you know, we, we do a little bit better when it's colder in the winter and warmer in the summer. And we've had that this year, so we benefit from, from that and some of our, um, our, uh, our plants, especially down in the senior region where it's actually performing the service which it is meant to do, where there is that peak demand. And you, we, we saw there were prices of, uh, three thousand dollars a megawatt, six thousand dollars a megawatt on Long Island. You know, our peakers being there to help meet that demand is critical for reliability in the region. Uh, but yes, we benefited, benefited from that earlier in the year, uh, so generation revenues are ahead. Overall, we're ahead of budget by eighty million dollars. That's really broken out in between operating, non-operating, uh, forty million and non-operating really through, due to, uh, interest income. Uh, we all expected there to be four or five rate cuts this year by the Federal Reserve. We've yet to see one. Uh, we're not even sure we're going to see one yet. It's been a little bit of a standoff between the president and the Federal Reserve Chairman Powell. The president calls too late, Powell. But I think, you know, there is a, uh, concern about the inflationary effects of tariffs. And until they fully see that and I'm just, and feel comfortable as to what that is, they're not going to, uh, appears that they're going to start, uh, lowering rates until they have some comfort around that. We're starting to see some slowdown signs in the economy. Hiring's, uh, hit a low, uh, this, uh, this morning in that, um, print. So we're starting to see a little bit of that slowdown. So I think it's going to come to a point where maybe towards the end of the year, they'll have to start, uh, really looking at lowering, uh, some rates. But in the meantime, we benefited, uh, from that, um, for the time being. And on the generation side, as I mentioned, you know, our, our, uh, mostly our downstate region was that was called on more than they normally would be because of the weather, the effects of that. Uh, so we benefited there, operating expenses, you know, uh, site O and M, the one we really try to keep an eye on is, uh, through the first six months has done well under budget. We'll see how that, you know, sort of evens out towards the end of the year. But again, uh, well controlled under budget. Uh, we, you know, we've put it in the expense category, the monetized funds, but really what that is, is some of that is in the revenues, right? But then we have to pay it out to the monetized funds for Western New York Economic Development Programs. So that shows up as an increase in expense, uh, allocation to capital. It's a little bit of a timing issue, but you know, we only, uh, see that as capital spending happens. We charge our overhead rate. So spending is a little bit slower or some, in our case, some of the projects we've capped out the indirect overhead allocation, for example, on the SmartPath Connect or the, or the headquarters building. So we'll see that come in probably a little lower. That has the, the effect of raising expenses overall because we're seeing less of a credit. But all in all, we are, uh, ahead of budget, uh, by eighty million dollars through the first six months. Any questions on that? Happy to answer that, otherwise we'll go to the full year forecast.
Yeah, go ahead and forecast. Expecting that to hold, it looks like.
Yeah, expecting a full forecast to hold. Now what we see here is generation evening out, uh, somewhat. You know, the overall margin, you know, coming down to twenty-three million dollars. But transmission is, um, is up significantly. A lot of that has to do with, again, the timing of how we do our, um, rate billing for transmission rates. So our rate year is from July one to the following June thirtieth. And it's, it's a retrospective look. So what we have to do, it's very hard to forecast our budget when we're going into a year because we have to wait for the twenty-four expenses to come in. And those expenses, as well as the allocation in terms of, you know, uh, the fact, the three factor formula we use between hydro, fossil fuel plants and transmission. All of that has to get done until we have our full four, uh, twenty-four numbers, uh, certified. Then we can put that into the new rate year. So it shows that there can be a pickup in the transmission rates. And again, that is going to be collected in cash over six months. But for accounting purposes, we have to accrue the full rate year. So while we're showing this, you know, increase, uh, that reflects that the new transmission year going from July to June thirtieth. So we accrue it this year, but we'll collect it between now and next June thirtieth. Operating expenses, again, that O and M, site O and M is really tracking well to budget in our forecast. So, um, other than that, uh, any other questions?
Anything that's, uh, you're worried about as you look ahead for the next five months or any sort of thing that you don't feel you got a good handle on in terms of, you know, risk or exposure, upside, downside?
Um, I mean, I think, you know, some of the, you know, we spoke early in the morning, in this morning about the new announcements that have, uh, taken place. We will start spending some money on that, um, that we had not put in our budget. So we'll have to make sure we have provided for enough money for whatever we're going to do between now and the end of this year. We will then address next year as part of the next year's budget. So, but that's not going to be a material amount. I don't see a significant amount of money being spent between now and the end of the year there. Really nothing major that I would say is material of concern. I think if anything, you know, we're we're optimistic that we should hold to these numbers, if not maybe do better. There's certain things we still don't know today, uh, such as our pension expense, which we get from the state. And that's based on how the stock market did through March thirty-first, which actually took a dip. As you recall, because of the tariffs, uh, but will, there's been a huge rebound in the market since then. So it's really been a V-shaped recovery on our OPEB expense. Uh, that's based on a June thirtieth date. Again, also very market sensitive and we're, we're up on that. So we could see that expense, uh, coming in lower, but we're still not sure about the pension expense. But those are the, you know, some of the variables we don't quite know yet at this point in time.
Okay. Well, it was a great outcome, so. Good news.
All right, thank you. And then just, uh, you're going to hear from Chris Hudson to talk about the renewables and the plan, everything on that side. On the other side of the house, on the transmission side, just a couple of quick updates. Uh, SmartPath Connect, you know, it seems to be going well. Ninety percent of the, uh, project is complete in terms of, you know, where we are in that cycle, but it will still not go into service until June of twenty twenty-six. And that's to allow, allow for a lot of, um, service outages that we have to have some testing and all the things that are necessary before it can go fully into, um, considered to be plant and service. Propel New York, we're still going through the Article seven process and, uh, doing some major, uh, contracting right now about some vendors for EPCs. Uh, as you know, there's been a huge community outreach in the areas of Propel. We continue to do open houses, reaching out to elected officials, people in the community. Uh, I, I believe that our message is getting across as to why this is really good for Long Island from a resiliency standpoint, by putting a lot of these above wires underground and protecting that part of the area and being able to move power around Long Island a lot more efficiently. Um, so I think, and also providing a lot of benefits to communities. There'll be additional taxes paid as a result of the project. So a lot of communities are looking forward to see the increase in, uh, in revenues for school districts and others. So that seems to be going well. Astoria property, uh, closed at the end of June. Uh, that is going to be sixteen acres of, uh, property in Astoria. That is very difficult to find these days and it will be very strategic and instrumental to us going forward for a lot of different uses we've identified, uh, for that piece of property that will help us in some of our plans, uh, going forward. And, um, uh, the other update is that the New York City Public Policy Transmission Need, which we called Five Borough Connect, uh, was withdrawn and canceled by the Public Service Commission. You know, back in, uh, a couple of weeks ago, on July seventeenth. You know, we, we understand the decision. I think it was prudent in terms of not having costs incurred without there being, you know, of, you know, so it doesn't become a bridge to nowhere essentially, right? There's no certainty around the offshore wind. So we understand, given the heightened need for affordability amongst ratepayers that take a more measured approach there. Um, but that being said, I do want to call out, uh, the work of, um, Rich Bahal, Bruce Farnash and his team and Rich's team on such a tremendous effort, putting together twelve different proposals that, uh, we believe we would have been the winner. So it's unfortunate in that regard, but I just want to, regardless, uh, the teams did a tremendous amount of work and we want to really send our thanks to them for that effort. So, uh, uh, the, the work and will be preserved and we'll be able to use a lot from that work in the future for different applications. So won't all be for, for none. Uh, next. As Justin mentioned earlier in his remarks, oh yes, we were able to close this past week on the prepaid financing. Uh, this is a, it's, it's really, as I explained earlier, it's a something is allowed in the IRS code, so it's, uh, it's there for the taking. And it really allows for this arbitrage between, uh, tax exempt and taxable rates. And that arbitrage is provided to a funding recipient, in this case was Athene, which is an insurance company. And as a result of the savings they get for their funding costs, they share that with us that we can flow through as savings to our customers. But what we've done here is we've locked that in. So we know what the savings are. We had a bogey of ten percent. We said, we're not doing the deal unless we hit ten percent. We could have done it, you know, earlier, we would have been lower, but we, we kept, uh, out of the market until we felt that we could hit that number. And as a result, our customers like New York City has got fifty power purchase agreements for solar projects. They can come, give us those power purchase agreements. We can put it into this facility we created and we'll push out the purchase power. And then we can give them ten percent reduction on their, um, price for their solar projects and any other eligible customer, so other municipalities. And as you see, the, the transaction has to be very big to generate savings. So no small projects can do this on their own. You'd have to aggregate to a big number. So, but right now, having it locked in, anybody that comes to us for the power purchase agreement, who is an eligible customer, can get the savings on their renewables, ten percent savings. So given the loss of tax credits and other things that are happening, this is an area where, you know, uh, working together with Empire State Development Corporation that created this special entity for our purpose and are putting this, uh, in place will help keep costs low for our customers.
Very well done. Great execution there.
Thanks. And I want to call out for that, Yomni Kalidini on our staff. She really picked up the ball and led the transaction along with, uh, Lori's team, uh, on the legal side and outside advisors. Uh, all came together to make it a very successful transaction.
Just said before, you said it was oversubscribed and yeah, so market interest, market support, opportunity to go back.
Yeah, this is a, a very, what I would say niche area, uh, not only in terms of how you do these projects, but who buys them from an investor standpoint. So there's a small universe, but of that universe, there are funds that have, uh, New York funds. So they get to take advantage of the triple tax exempt nature of this bond issue that others don't have. So from their purposes, it was provided extra value. And the fact that there's, uh, too many of the same names in New York. So anytime there's a new piece of paper out there, they, they jump on it. But these are, these were big tickets. We have people that were taking down a hundred million dollar pieces of this transaction.
Terrific, yeah. Questions for Adam on any of that?
Very thoughtful, Adam, for your routine and, and very creative. Are there other opportunities that you see in twenty-six and beyond for, for another, you know, big tranche like this?
Other things like this, now that we have this entity set up, we can use it for other, uh, similar type projects. I sent ahead, uh, read ahead materials, something we're doing with entity called NFA, the National Finance Authority. And that will help us leverage more on transmission side so that we can do more transmission projects without overburdening our capital budget for all the other new priorities that we have, like renewables and, and nuclear down the road. So, um, that's going to be something we're going to look to build on.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well done. All right, Chris, we talked about, uh, where'd you go? There we are, a couple of times this morning. Showtime.
Okay.
Afternoon, Chairman, Trustees, esteemed colleagues and members of the public. We have a lot to cover today, but, uh, I'll start with, uh, giving just a brief overview of the new opportunities that we've identified in this, uh, new tranche and frame it with some additional, uh, context. These three charts illustrate the breakdown, uh, of our renewable project plan opportunities. The first tranche that was included, uh, as part of the strategic plan in January consisted of thirty-seven projects, representing more than, uh, three gigawatts of, uh, of capacity. Uh, the center graphic represents all the new renewable, uh, opportunities we've identified, including nearly eight hundred megawatts of, uh, uh, some, of, uh, wind and a substantial amount of, uh, storage opportunities. Uh, the vast majority of these, uh, storage assets, uh, are around a hundred and fifty, uh, are part of a three portfolio, uh, projects primarily located in New York City and the Westchester County area. The final graphic represents, uh, the total mix of projects and portfolios that are included in the draft of the updated strategic plan. Uh, you'll note that the community represents nearly seven gigawatts of potential new capacity opportunities. We're proud of the diversity of this portfolio and I'll color in a little bit more later on. We're proud of the diversity of this portfolio and I'll color in a little bit more later on as to the detail and specificity of this. Next slide. Virtually all the projects that are included in our plan fall into two categories. One is our greenfield projects, which are self-developed projects. And the other, of course, is our co-developed projects. The renewable plan that the board approved in January contained of 10 greenfield projects, totaling more than 200 megawatts of capacity and 27 co-developed projects representing nearly 3 gigawatts of opportunities. And right now, one of those projects has been under award, we're under the negotiation, the EPC contract that we're trying to complete here before the end of the year to break ground. Now, the greenfield projects from the first tranche are still in relatively early phases of development, but are progressing ultimately and largely due to federal hostilities and the recent July 4th legislation. Most of these projects being pursued will take further evaluation to determine their validity of the projects moving forward. The co-developed projects representing majority of what we have included in the plan, that is because generally speaking, those projects are further along in interconnection and permitting applications and process. It is easier to identify risks associated with co-developed projects. So they are generally easier to bring online. They also typically require less resource planning than the greenfield projects themselves. That can partially explain why a project like Summer Solars is anticipated to be our first project with shovels in the ground. The second tranche of opportunities we identified include three greenfield projects, representing nearly 30 megawatts of projects and 27 co-developed projects, three of which are these portfolio projects, representing 3.8 gigawatts of opportunities. Of those, around 700 are, 700 megawatts are the distributed scale storage projects, primarily located in Westchester County and New York City. Those storage projects are spread out across three developer-led project portfolios comprising of 152 different systems. Next slide. I'd like to address the big elephant in the room, and that's HR1. Due to the recent federal actions, our ability to execute on many of these projects are in jeopardy. I don't want to sugarcoat the severity of these actions. They will have an impact on our projects and our portfolios. There's been a lot of press coverage on HR1, also known as the one big beautiful bill. It is a tremendously large bill funded by a variety of sweeping cuts, including the elimination of federal tax credits for wind and solar projects. It is a dramatic change from the IRA that was the previous act, which was an important piece of legislation that made many of the projects we're talking about here financially viable, providing full tax credits for wind and solar through 2032 or until there was 70% reductions of emissions. HR1 changes a couple of things. First, it says the wind and solar projects must commence construction. And I'll get back to what that actually means here in a little bit. Before July 2026 or replaced in service before the end of 2027, that's qualify for the energy storage, before qualify for the tax credits. HR1 does not change the timeline associated with tax credits for energy storage projects, which must commence construction before the end of 2033 for full credit. And there's a ramp down past 2033 for two years. HR1 will also broaden foreign entities of concern restrictions. Those restrictions will apply to all projects, including solar, wind and storage, owned or controlled by, or that receive material assistance from a FIAC classified country. At the moment, we understand those countries refer to China, Russia, Iran and North Korea. So what does material assistance really mean? It's a very good question and unfortunately, we don't know at this point in time. An executive order issued on July 7th changed the, charged the Treasury with revising guidance related to FIAC and what it means for a project to commence construction. We expect that to be identified on August 18th, per the executive order. Currently, many developers achieving the IRS construction start definition and lock in tax credits by awarding a contract for the manufacturing and delivery of customer equipment. In some of these instances, incurring 5% of the total project cost also satisfies that criteria. The exact changes to the commence construction definition are something we don't want to speculate on, but we anticipate that the incoming guidance will be more restrictive on safe harboring strategies that do not include onsite physical work. The additional changes to tax credits policy resulting from the July executive order are expected to be announced in mid-August. Immediately following that, the Power Authority will conclude an ongoing analysis that we're currently doing to ascertain the impacts the projects included in our plan. Next slide. So here's a timeline that lays out the aforementioned changes. The deadline with blue boxes relates to wind power. Orange boxes relate to solar power and green boxes relate to energy storage projects. You'll note that the incoming FIAC guidance will impact in all projects that do not meet the updated commence construction language before the end of the year at this point in time. You'll also see, unlike wind and solar, there is a phase down of tax credits for energy storage projects starting in 2033. Those deadlines remain unchanged by HR1, meaning the expected deadlines won't impact the large amount of energy storage projects in the second tranche of opportunities we identified. Next month, once Treasury updates the FIAC guidance and defines commenced construction, our team will continue reviewing and evaluating projects to determine how many will be impacted, how they will be impacted and our steps. I want to make it clear that in spite of these challenges and incoming constraints, we are not abandoning our commitment to building a portfolio of clean energy projects that will strengthen our state's grid with diversified generation resources. In fact, what these developments mean is that we will need to be ever more creative in how we develop and finance projects in order for us to be able to continue to lean in. Excellent. So now that we've covered what these new risks are, to the extent we understand them and what we can do, we want to safe harbor or lock in tax credits for as many projects as possible. The best way to do that is by starting physical construction ahead of commenced construction deadlines, including the HR1. So to that end, we believe it will be necessary to prioritize projects. The slide identifies three lenses through which we will be looking to identify which projects to prioritize. So on the first part, we would stand as associating the permitting process. Depending on the projects that could relate to obtaining, signing approval through ORES, the Office of Renewable Energy Siding, or through a SECRUP process, we are closely following whether projects required or are waiting increasing scrutiny, scrutinized, scrutinized federal permits. If they are, they must, they may be subject to unprecedented delays. We're also looking at projects that have or are competitive enough to secure an offtake agreement, such as a rec with NYSERTA under the upcoming solicitation or a PPA with a customer that NIPA has the authority to sell power to. And finally, projects will, with well-established supply chains, as you may know, lead times for many, for major equipment on utility scale projects, such as high voltage transformers can be multiple years. Every developer in the country right now is seeking to rapidly procure equipment and safe harbor their projects with the addition of these, this new deadline. So there will be a supply and demand imbalance for resources, meaning it will be critical to move fast and work with developers who have strong existing supply chain relationships. Looks like. This map shows where all the projects in portfolio, including in the draft of the updated strategic plan, are located. The zoomed-in figure on the right illustrates the potential storage capacity associated with the three portfolio projects in the, in the second tranche across New York City and in Westchester County. There are currently more than 350 projects right now in the New York ISO Interconnection Q and Cluster Study, and more than 40 of those projects are included in our plan. Additionally, we have 13 of the 67 projects contracted for Tier 1 NYSERTA recs. Next slide. I'd like to take a minute to showcase the tremendous progress we've made advancing these projects on both sides of the house, self-developed and co-developed. To do so, it's necessary to split this into two buckets of projects included into a separate chart illustrating different parameters. As the work by our team is fundamentally different, for self-developed projects, we must start from scratch. That begins with projects vetting through desktop pre-feasibility assessments before progressing to more complex full feasibility studies that require visits to the sites. After that, projects advance to development by preparing and submitting interconnection and permitting applications. To date, about 130 megawatts of our greenfield pipeline has advanced from feasibility studies into very early stages of active development. For our co-developed projects, evaluating and advancing these opportunities is more of a mergers and acquisitions business. Our teams are constantly digging through the data rooms and working with internal and external subject matter experts to determine each project's viability and bankability. That entails more than just determining associated revenues that can be generated. We also explore the benefit that could be delivered to the grid and to communities across the state. Excellent. Now, I'd like to share four major priorities we are tracking. I touched up upon how securing an offtake contract is critical to a project's success. The NYSERTA index storage credit and renewable energy credit solicitations are two of the primary avenues to do so. The renewable energy credit or REC solicitation has been, has been around for several years and has, and has been a major catalyst for fortifying the economic viability of renewable energy generation projects in the New York State market. Based on the best information available, we are expecting this year's solicitation to be released in late Q3 or Q4 of 2025 with awarded selections in 2026. The index storage credit solicitation is brand new and will play a major role in improving the economics of energy storage projects across New York State. That to date has been difficult. The first solicitation, which was released yesterday, with Phase 1 bids most likely due in September and award selections made in early 2026. Additionally, we are tracking the New York ISO Cluster Study process where a considerable portfolio of projects, a pipeline currently resides. There are several major milestones through this process during which New York ISO and transmission operators evaluate and simulate proposed projects to ascertain their viability and the cost associated with tying them into the transmission system. Final results are expected in mid-2026. Many proposed projects are weeded out during different stages of this process by either being deemed not technically feasible or requiring cost prohibitive upgrades. Lastly, but certainly not least, is the schedule associated with sharing this draft to the, to the public, gathering feedback through a public comment period that includes two virtual public hearings and obtaining your approval at our December board meeting. Excellent. Something our team is really proud of is the Renewable Energy Access and Community Help or Reach Program, which attributes a portion of our project revenue towards reducing utility bills for low to moderate income households within disadvantaged communities across the state. We announced our first reach project back in April in Albany alongside Mayor Kathy Sheehan and DC Commissioner Amanda Lefton. As a reminder, our first tranche had four projects designated to be developed under this program, representing more than 100 megawatts, two of, two of which have progressed into active development. Within the new tranche, the 152 distributed scales, storage systems within the three developer-led portfolio projects we've added will be explored for development under this particular program. Excellent. I'll leave you all today with a snapshot of our public hearing schedule. Both hearings will be held virtually, one in the morning and one in the evening. The public comment period begins today. So I'll ask everyone who is interested in participating in the process to submit their comments to the new portal of our website. Information on this process can be found at nipa.gov/renewables. As we've discussed, there are major hurdles ahead, but with your support and the support of our employees, we will continue to do all we can to build a diverse portfolio of clean energy projects that bolster our state's electric grid. Thank you. Any questions?
There's a lot. That's a lot. Um. What should we expect? What's the betting line? Is there one? Too early to tell, too dangerous to do so?
I would say it's probably a little too early to tell. I think August 14th or 18th, we'll, we'll definitely get some information and we'll help to complete our evaluation as to which projects we can pull forward. The other thing that I'll stress is that there is a, there is going to be an energy demand requirement before nuclear is onboard and how that gap is filled will require renewable assets for sure. So even though without the tax credits makes it a challenge for projects based on their economics, does not necessarily may, mean that we won't be pursuing projects before. It just may require economics to change to support that. And we'll look at financial mechanisms to be able to support that.
But storage is safe for now.
Storage is safe for now, except for, you know, what would be considered, what would fall under FIAC and how that will be, how that will affect particular projects. But keep in mind, there's a deadline to that as well of 2033 for the phase down of that over a two-year period.
Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Louis. Questions, fire away.
So, so the New York State ISO, plugging in, so new generation capacity, plugging, supply, plugging in. Talk to me, talk to us a moment about that process. Because, because the ISO has to figure out how to accept that energy, right?
Correct. So, so there's the cluster study process and we have completed a Phase 1 of that process, which I believe there's 500 projects that have been instituted within that. There's a Phase 2 that is the upcoming, that is kind of refining those projects and determining which ones really will, will fulfill the requirement and need between the New York ISO Cluster Study.
So, so, so we're in a favored position with, with our, I mean, for what you can see and your team can see, we're in a favorite, favorite position that as soon as we bring those, those megawatts on, that, that, that we can get the power into the grid.
As long as we're within that cluster study group of projects, yes. And, and we have a portion of those projects. We don't have all of those projects, but we have a portion that are in our updated strategic plan.
That's helpful, because I know in some states, that's a big issue, right?
Absolutely.
That, that, the grid has to be prepared to accept the new power.
Absolutely. But we've been, we've been working through that process over the last year or so under the cluster study grouping. And that, we are looking at, you know, are there potential ways of that as far as from an acceleration standpoint what can be done to support those particular projects?
That's fabulous, thank you.
So help me, us manage the message here. So first tranche, you said that we approved back in January, 3 million. Variety of questions and pushback for it should be more. We said then, well, there's more in the pipeline we're looking at. So we're more than doubling that. We've got a pool of seven gigawatts potential and opportunity. How do, how do we want to position this? What's, what's the message publicly as to what optionality that creates for us? Back to my earlier question, it's just too early to tell, stay tuned. So five months from now, we'll all have a better handle on how this is going to settle down and sort out.
Sure. So within the projects that we have, we do have several that are, are at a stage that we think we will be able to still meet the requirements of the July 2026. So we're trying to pull those projects forward and make sure that those get awarded to be able to support that particular ITC requirement. Past that point, you know, beyond storage and evaluating other solar and wind projects, we will continue to deep dive, evaluate and determine which projects have the viability for us to move forward to advance the portfolio. Keep in mind that the portfolio is quite large, you know, for a, for a single entity, for even for a single state. That's a large portfolio of opportunity, of projects, so.
Which is why I'm asking the question.
We expect. Absolutely. We, we expect there's going to be some attrition to those projects that are listed in the queue through various means. Some of them may progress on their own, some of them may just do not fit the viability for us to move forward on. So we expect there to be a level of attrition of these particular projects and ones that will move forward. And we're doing that in a strategic manner to ensure that we meet our financial requirements.
Okay. Other comments, questions for Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the work that NIPA is doing across, across the next generation of renewables, new power, nuclear, the complexity here is astounding. So I just want to compliment Chris, you and your team, Joe, you and your teams, but the collective NIPA team. This is, the landscape is changing, the regulations are changing, there's executive orders that are changing. And from, from my perspective, the, the, the amount of intellectual rigor that you're. And from from my perspective, the 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 amount of intellectual rigor that you brought to bear, Justin, your whole team. Is is phenomenal. So I just want to say thanks.
No, well said, well said.
Yeah, just to add, I mean, again, the landscape, everything that's happening, Chris, the fact that you have to. Watch what's going on with tranche one, bring on tranche two, move forward, evaluate. You know, again, just really appreciate that. It's it's a constantly changing landscape and we have to think creatively. But seeing so many of the ways already today, we've talked about how we're being creative and the relationships we've been building. You know, the work started a long time ago. It's just things, you know, keep happening. So thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Chris. All right, Alexis.
Hey, good afternoon, trustees, colleagues and members of the public. My report this month features two items. The first is going to be an overview of our third annual integrated report. This is arguably one of our most important and popular publications with our last report having over twenty one hundred views. So proud of that. And I will shift to a more, oh, yeah, let's. Let me let me stop with those. Okay, so so then I will shift to a more typical risk spotlight and I'll cast a risk lens on the prospect of nuclear generation in the state. I also have a guest star today and I am really happy to be introducing our new VP of Sustainability, Paul Farin. Paul recently served as Principal Deputy Assistant to the Secretary of the Army for Installations, Energy and the Environment. In this role, he was a top advisor to the Secretary of the Army and Chief of Staff of the Army on matters related to climate, energy, sustainability and environment. With a career spanning many other roles, including active duty as a naval helicopter pilot. To the Operational Energy Office of the Pentagon and with degrees in electrical engineering, environmental policy and energy management. We're really looking forward to the insights that Paul brings to this organization. Even better, he's been jumping right in because he's been here all of two months and we have been presenting today. So please come on up.
That's that great military training, that.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm not sure if it's good or bad that the chairman left just as I would. As Alexa said, I just a little over two and a half months here. I haven't met most of you, but I'm very much looking forward to working with all of you in the coming months. And I also want to say how much I appreciate that you leaving it to the new guy to be one of the last obstacles before lunch. So. Next slide, please. Oh, no, sorry. Leave it back where we're at, sorry. This is our third go at the report at the integrated report, so. I don't think we need to get too far into the process with all of this. We keep it a fairly high level so we can move through this as quickly as you'd like, but happy to delve into any. Details with any questions that you have. The integrated report, as most of you know, it combines the annual report and the sustainability report into one. And it really highlights the values that we create for our stakeholders and it increases our transparency both internally and externally to the public. Next slide. Just since we are seven months into the year, just a reminder, this is a twenty twenty four report. So it's focusing on twenty twenty four report and it follows the guidance of Vision twenty thirty. It talks a little bit about Vision twenty thirty renewed, but it's really all about Vision twenty thirty and the priorities that's set. Next slide. All right, this is a lot of words. Fortunately, you've all read the integrated report, so you don't need to read this. This is really highlighting the accomplishments. That we achieved in twenty twenty four and as you can see, it has it aligns with the strategic priorities of Vision twenty thirty. Just a couple of highlights from these achievements. We allocated more than eighty megawatts through the economic development programs. We completed seventy seven building energy efficiency projects. And we did numerous projects to enhance the infrastructure of the canals and their adjacent ecosystems. Next slide. And because you cannot talk to someone on the sustainability team without talking about emissions, sir, our obligatory emissions slide. You can see our scope, one, two, and three emissions as well as the total altogether. And since even I get confused about what the scope one, scope two and scope three missions are, very simply put in plain English. Our scope one emissions, that's the emissions from our own internal operations. Essentially, if we put fuel in it and turn on an engine, that's our scope one emissions. Scope two emissions are the emissions of the power generated that we take from the grid. In addition to any transmission losses from our own transmission lines. And the scope three emissions, those are the emissions from the making, transporting and disposal of all of the stuff that we buy. And that also includes the power that we buy and then resell. As you can see, scope three emissions are far and away the largest source of emissions for us. And you can also see that all three categories did, they have been increasing. That's mostly because of increasing demand. Resulting in increasing generation as well as increasing buying and selling of power on our part. Hang on, not yet. But just to give you an idea for our total emissions, thirty percent of our total emissions were from the production and the transport of the fuel. And forty seven percent of our total emissions were from the purchase and resale of power. So really, you're looking at all of our. Ninety eight percent of our mission or ninety seven percent of our missions are really from the fossil fuels, generations of fossil fuels, just to put that into perspective for you. But it's not all doom and gloom, just so you all know, of the hundred largest energy producers in this country. NiPA, as you probably know, is the thirty second largest, but we are the ninth cleanest when it comes to the intensity of CO two generation. Excellent now. And yes, this is a report is about twenty twenty four, but we do tie in looking to the future. We talk about the expanded authority. And the renewals, which Chris just very expertly covered. Thank you. And then, of course, we do talk a little bit about the nuclear and the bridge into the future. That in a nutshell is the twenty twenty four integrated report. Are there any questions?
I think we're.
Ready for lunch.
Appreciate this. We've tried by an overview.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so speaking about the future, let's talk nuclear power from a risk angle. You'll hear me say quite frequently that risk management is just about mitigating uncertainty. And there's a great deal of uncertainty right now in the evolving electrical landscape across the state of New York. And that is from the potential rapid addition of large loads like data centers and new and expanding manufacturing. To anticipated fossil fuel generator retirements over the course of about ten years to the intermittency aspect of renewable assets. Incorporating new nuclear into the state's portfolio is an excellent move from a risk management perspective. It is risk mitigation. This is now going to be a source of highly reliable, continuous emission free electricity. And it'll be a source of firm base low power that helps to maintain grid reliability. And then cherry on top, of course, is that it is aligned with the priorities of the federal administration. So that helps us to manage any regulatory or policy related uncertainties as well. So we're excited and more than that, proud to be trusted to deliver on this opportunity going forward. As we do, we'll be assessing and mitigating and managing the risks of this new project at every stage. So if you can go to the next slide. Sam. Sorry, can't help myself. So earlier you heard from from Justin about the work of our innovation team with every over the course of the past year investigating nuclear technologies. As well as the fact that we're embarking on a twelve week sprint. So we are hitting the ground running in terms of the execution. At this very early stage, which is just project development, site location and technology, those are big decisions to be made. They are not mutually exclusive and then they'll lead to subsequent additional decisions that have to be made all along the way. And so understanding risk is going to be a core element of our decision making process. One of our first priorities of our step first steps forward in this twelve week sprint will be to work with a third party to do. A deep dive risk analysis to bring their expertise, their experience and their external independent perspective to complement ours. If you look at the graphic on the left, this is just showing some typical types of project risks that we would encounter for an asset installation. Quick flyover will be they run the gamut of everything from scope, setting expectations, narrowing down the options. To communications, how are we involving and interacting with stakeholders? Procurement from a people and partners perspective, that's everything from workforce skills to our leadership engagement. To the qualities of the partners that we will be working with. Safety, environmental, again, like very typical core to our industry and to project related risk management. And then estimating and delivering to time and cost are going to be something that will be really scrutinized as we move forward. And so again, this is just giving a good perspective of the type of risk categories that we'll be considering at each stage as we move forward. Really, though, at the end of the day, the bottom line is just that we will treat this project with the same high level of risk due diligence. As we have with all of our projects, all of our works as NiPA and canals. The risk profile might be different for nuclear versus transmission versus hydro versus renewables. But that does not mean that we step into this with any assumption that the risk overall would be any greater or even any less. We are going to be looking objectively and assessing and reassessing across these suite of risk categories and potentially others. As we do move forward with the aim to keep within our risk appetite and to make sure that we are mitigating appropriately. So going in eyes wide open. This is an early stage, so we have not begun the deep dive assessment work, and this is just to give the trustees and the public. Just a broad overview of our approach and how we will be moving as we execute going forward. Simple as that for the time being with more to come. Any questions?
And the more to come is obviously important. That's what we're all, as we continue to evaluate and monitor. I mean, that's our part of the initial reaction here is, okay, how do we? Manage and navigate the risks as well as the rewards. So appreciate the assurance and the drive by table setting. In terms of what we will see in the in the months ahead here.
Thank you, Chairman. Any other questions, comments?
As part of risk, you're involved in the twelve week sprint, I'm assuming.
Yes, both at the senior leadership level and also with some of our key risk related staff members who are part of the more day to day working group.
Coming out of that, we'll have a much better handle, you know, and begin to, you know, really put some meat on the bones of, you know, this framework here. So. No question, that'll be a key outcome output of that initial sprinter effort. So agree.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, great. Thanks, Alexis. Appreciate that. Okay. I got audit committee next.
Okay, I'm ready.
Dennis, out of the bullpen.
Out of the bullpen.
What is it called? Your walk in?
Walk in, yeah, really. Whatever. So, all right.
Well, good afternoon.
No Met song needed, just lean right into it.
He lost last night, so no Met song. All right, the the audit committee met on Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five and adopted the minutes from the March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five audit committee meeting. The committee also received two reports from Salmon Alley. The two thousand and twenty five internal audit update and the chief audit executive. Required communications to the audit committee included global internal audit standards, essential conditions. In addition, Ken Lerman presented an update on artificial intelligence data and analytics. There were no items requiring a vote at the July audit meeting. Therefore, no motion is required. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So that's what you missed, B. Oh.
I'm sure I missed a little more.
That was very good meeting, very good discussion. Okay, thank you very much, Dennis. Before we move to the consent agenda, I think we've got an update from Sandra. Work there, Sarah Sandra, workforce development. Little follow up.
Little follow up, look ahead. Good afternoon, Chairman, trustees, NiPA colleagues and the public. At the last finance committee meeting, I provided a look back on the first year of our workforce development initiative. So today I'm here to present a review. Of our design for the upcoming solicitation for application for the current fiscal year. This year will issue a request for application or RFA, which will serve as one competitive funding mechanism. While allowing applicants to submit proposals during three distinct periods throughout the fiscal year. The request for application will be similar to last year's solicitation and the eligibility criteria will be maintained. Within the RFA, the geographic boundaries, technology areas, eligible applicants and program specifications are outlined. Applicants will be required to submit a comprehensive application, including a scope of work document, a budget, supplier diversity utilization plan. And we will continue and maintain a focus on wraparound services, support services, on the job learning opportunities and job placement. To ensure a competitive yet inclusive process, there will be three open submission windows during which applications will be accepted. The submission windows will be specified thirty day timeframes. The application cycles will occur in quarters three and four of twenty twenty five and quarter one of twenty twenty six. This will allow us to receive submissions from new organizations, yet they will still be subject to a competitive process. Upon the closure of each application cycle, the evaluation committee will review and score the submissions. Applications will be evaluated based on their proposed scope of work, their training schedule, budget, organizational profile. As well as their focus on priority populations, job placement and their supplier diversity utilization plan. The evaluation evaluation committee is comprised of five people. And one NiPA representative from environmental justice, one from corporate strategy, one from community and government relations, one from economic development and one from workforce development. Following the evaluation scoring of the applications will present our recommendations to the finance committee for approval. And recommendation to then be presented to the board of trustees for final approval. The solicitation for applications will be posted on our social media, on our website, sent out to all those who have inquired. To previous bidders and it will also be placed on the New York State Contract Reporter. We feel this approach will allow us to gain a greater reach, allow for new providers to respond throughout the course of the year, yet still be subject to a competitive process. I'm excited. I look forward to the upcoming RFA and our next round of applicants. I'll take any questions at this time.
Okay, so I want to say thank you for creating a process that is just equitable and available to everyone. To learn about and follow. And the other is, I think the other piece that I was interested in. Exploring was a better presence on the NiPA website, right? So that people can really find this information in a way that encourages participation.
Thank you. Yes, I'm meeting with our website designer tomorrow, too. We have some copy going on there and we are working on making it more visible as well.
And I just focus on, you know, the evaluation criteria. So you're looking at that on the front end. I'm interested in how are we doing on the back end? What are the actual outcomes? You're evaluating based on. Expectations and what they're going to deliver. Look forward to hearing and seeing more of what's actually being delivered and what those actual outcomes. I realize that takes time, but. To me, that's ultimately, you know, how we, you know, evaluate the return on our investment.
Of course, of course. And so we're starting, some of the recipients are about at their six month mark now, and so we're starting to get some data in. And so I'll be compiling that for the fall, right? We should have some data not complete, but so far I can tell you that all of the, you know, I meet with each one quarterly and they're on track and they're really excited and I've been hearing some great stories.
Super. Yeah, we look forward to hearing, you know, more of that, obviously critically important initiative and one we're all very, very supportive. Of and about, so hope and expect, you know, some really great outcomes here.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited.
Not a game of perfect, they're going to have some misses, but they'll look forward to really starting to move the needle in a meaningful way, so.
Absolutely, and I think it's great because we're able to speak with the, you know, recipients and if they're, they do have trouble, we have boots on the ground to help them or. Connect them to community organizations or work with them directly.
Be nimble.
Absolutely.
All right, terrific, terrific.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Thanks, Sandra. Thanks very much for the follow up. All right, consent agenda. Coming down home stretch. All right, everybody had an opportunity. It was rather lengthy, but I hope you had a chance to purview all of that. If there's any other questions, always happy to have those entertained, if not. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All right, thank you. Fine, have a have a motion and a second. Questions? Yep, Louis. Yep, noted. Yep, noted. Okay.
So do you want to take that one?
We've it's no, no, we're covered. Yeah, we're covered. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, support the agenda, aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carried in your abstention relative to the one item duly noted. Louis, thank you very much. Unless there's any other matters to come before us, that completes our full agenda for today. We thank everyone for their attendance, participation, and as always, active engagement. As you've heard referenced multiple times, we'll next be together up in Buffalo in a couple of months, September twenty third. We'll be on site in Niagara Falls at the power project itself for the formal board meeting, otherwise engaged around the canals conference starting earlier that week. So I look forward to the remaining sixty days of summer before we turn the page at that point on fall. And thank you again for your time today and happy August and September. Go Bills, go Mets, go Yankees, go Brewers. All right, have a great day, everyone. Thank you.